You ready? You good, Kevin?
Uh, no.
Okay. We'll hold off.
I'm good.
Okay.
This meeting is called to order in accordance with the open public meetings law. This, in accordance with chapter two thirty-one of the public laws of nineteen seventy-five, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided. This meeting of January twenty-first, twenty twenty-five, was published in the Curry News and Star Ledger and placed on the borough's website in Bolton Board at Borough Hall. A copy of this notice is available to the public and a copy of this statement shall be included in the minutes of this meeting. Mayor Brian Gallagher.
Here.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Here.
Andrew Conti.
Here.
Glenn Deney.
Here.
Randy Pitts.
Here.
Gina Stravic.
Here.
Roger Verne.
Here.
All right, please stand for the salute to the flag.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, motion for approval of the minutes of December sixteen, so moved.
Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Actually, Andrew has to recuse himself from sixteen.
Recused.
Because he wasn't on council yet.
So noted.
Okay. And then approval of the minutes of January one, twenty twenty-five.
So moved. Second.
Discussion, roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Deney.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravic.
Recused.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right, departmental reports and notices, none to speak of, committee reports. So let's go down the row. Andrew, you're up.
Not much to report, but the county does have some tax assistance going with the county's volunteer services and AARP for a tax aid program, anybody in the county, but it's specifically older or low, moderate income folks with disabilities, people who have trouble preparing them themselves for federal and state. So if you need any assistance, county program, county website.
Excellent, great. Gina.
The Board of Health met on Wednesday, last Wednesday, they reviewed the contract with the county health department for services. They also talked about events for the first half of the year. The Somerville Rescue Squad had their annual dinner on Saturday. They did awards program, they had their ninety-seventh year celebration, and they also responded to a hundred and fifty calls approximately last month.
Okay, all right, thank you. Glenn.
Great, so we will be hearing more from Environmental Commission later on, but I will say that in our recent meeting, we covered a number of different things, including looking forward to the Green Fair in April, trying to plan that out, and then also we'll be meeting here on Tuesday, February eleventh at seven. And I'm just gonna preemptively say thank you to Jeff and all of the environmental team for all the hard work that they've done, which we'll hear about in a little bit on their report. And then for the fire department, just a big thank you to all the work they've done, and they had responded to over six hundred and sixty-one alarms in twenty twenty-four. So just doing a lot of really great work, and in our recent meeting, talked a lot about the preparations and the excitement of moving into the new facility. So, thank you.
All right, great, thank you. Teresa.
Thank you. The municipal alliance and youth services commission met on January ninth. We were updated on how the programs that were funded last year, at the beginning of the school year, have been going. Everything's been going great with the Vanderbux and Planning Challenge Day and things like that for the middle school. And the library board of trustees meeting will be, was rescheduled to January thirtieth at six P M. because there was a conflict with the schedule this month. So I will be giving an update at the next meeting for that. And the public safety committee met on January sixteenth at six P M., where we discussed the plans for this year and what they would like to concentrate on this year, which would be speeding in town, corner site triangle on Davenport and High Street, and pedestrian education program. So we'll be meeting again next month on February twentieth at six P M.
Great, all right, thank you. Ready?
Thank you, Mayor. As a reminder, the downtown Somerville Alliance Annual Stakeholders Meeting is this Thursday, January twenty-third, six to eight P M., where we'll celebrate the heart and soul of downtown Somerville. Thank you for that. The meeting agenda is the twenty twenty-four annual report, twenty twenty-five updates, networking opportunities, and with district businesses. The DSA is also looking for volunteers to join and support their committees, events, marketing, infrastructure, and so much more. Hope to see you all there, and Mayor and all of council, you're all invited. Hope.
Great.
Please come out.
Thank you. Great. Roger.
I have nothing for this evening.
Okay, all right. Next up, we have a presentation of the annual report from the Environmental Commission. Jeff Lamborn, outgoing chair of the Environmental Commission, who didn't, at least I know of, last year did a fantastic job, very thorough and expanding, which is, which is nice. I guess you're gonna give us an update on all things great that transpired last year from the Environmental Commission's perspective?
That's, that's the plan.
All right. Glenn, anything you want to add to that?
Just the, you'll see the, the amount of time, effort, and energy that has come through the Environmental Commission has been impressive. I mean, I started with them just before COVID, and the amount of time and energy just that people put in is incredible, and it really does impact, you know, everyone in this community. So I look forward to seeing more.
Great.
You're up.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor, appreciate it. And council, great to have you, your attention, we do this because we like it. I'm gonna attempt to keep this about ten to fifteen minutes, probably gonna be fifteen minutes based on how, how the previous reports have been, but as Mayor Gallagher mentioned, my name is Jeff Lamborn, I am the outgoing chair for the Environmental Commission, about two and a half years, and I have a couple of members here today, at least one for sure, here to support, so that's nice to have that. But I'll go through this and let you guys know what we've been up to this year, and appreciate, if you have any questions, feel free to let me know, otherwise, at the end, happy to take those. So the, let me know when it's transferring there. Good? Okay, so the Environmental Commission is, our mission is to educate, advocate, and promote the best policies and practices for the borough's environment and the health and safety of its residents. Our team is a very diverse team that's been around for many years. The stars, next to everybody's name here on the commissioners list, and the closely related green team that we have, are people that have been with us multiple years. So there, there's more, there's former chairs that are constantly part of this commission and new chairs that are coming in. It's nice to have what we do have here, a lot of vigorous conversation and great ideas that are brought to the table every month for our meetings, in addition to here and there emails back and forth and the social network that we built together. So we tackle local environmental challenges and advocate for sustainable practices, those are important for us, and our efforts reflect the belief that when community members collaborate, there's lasting impact that follows us. To give some highlighted numbers for us, we have a volunteer list that we maintain, and over seventy-five of those people came out to help for various things that we did this year. We were able to put to work over a hundred and fifty thousand dollars worth of grant dollars that resulted in two hundred and two trees planted, which is nice to see, a growing tree canopy, many hours, and when you convert that to what the internet tells us a volunteer's hour is worth in the state of New Jersey, we're putting in some serious work to help out what we do here. A bit new for us this year is our plans and ordinances, those are something that we brought to the attention a couple times, so we're happy to keep at it as long as a good effort works between us and Glenn. Thank you again as our liaison, we're able to bring these to you guys here on, on the Borough Council. We can get done a lot, but our partners are the most important. On the left is a list of those in Somerville, which are over a dozen within the, within the local government's businesses, as well as the high school and others, other clubs here in town. Beyond that, there's a lot that we learn and we bring back to Somerville, both between grants as well as knowledge. It's nice to have so many of these groups to lean on, and these relationships that we're building are, are really paying off for us. The bulk of the presentation, I'm gonna talk about what we've been up to this year. So as you can see, there's a lot of smiling faces here at our community garden, these are a combination of our green team that manages the garden, as well as commission members and growers of various plots that we have here, about the fifteen plots there. For those that are unaware, the community garden is located at the intersection of Veterans Memorial Drive East and Main Street by Fireman's Field, and you can see the tennis courts and the pickleball courts in the background there. Our highlight event every year is for Earth Day, and in particular, this was a new venture for us this year, a lot of great photographs here show all the people involved, the majority of our event and attention was spent on Division Street, but we, that was a spinoff from what we always do, which is a, a, on the top right here, a town cleanup, where we, every year for, gosh, I mean, do you know how long we've been doing this for?
Over thirty years.
Over thirty years, and, and just related to Earth Day in general, finding a reason to come out and clean up the town, so we have a trash pickup that the Department of Public Works helps us coordinate and make sure that we do get supplies and, and efforts to clean up what we do find. We do provide seedlings, this by the Arbor Day Foundation that we give out to folks to plant, that's always great to have, and as I mentioned, this year on the left side of the, of this is our, our Green Fair. We moved this to Division Street this past year and hoping to continue it. Over twenty-five local organizations from the state, private organizations, businesses, and many others from, came out to kind of talk sustainability and, and, and show what it, what it means to go green, if you will, and, and the various different flavors that those are. It's a, it's a new event style for us where it's a kid-friendly space for families to learn about our local environment, and we, we paired it around lunchtime, so there was a lot of otherwise traffic that may not find us out there, and it was really happy, we're really happy for how it came out this year. And the last item I want to put, mention too, is a high school student three years ago, Bridget Lacerda helped us put together a, a town swap, which is, in a way, a yard sale for the town, so put items that are used, whether the condition you would want to put out, and as long as someone wants them for the weekend that Earth Day is, come out to the curbs and find what you want. If you don't like it, then don't have to take it, if you do like it, it's yours, but bring it back if it's out on the curb at the end of the day, and what it does is gives a new home for things that may be loved but just not, planning board puts aside as part of the Borough Development Fund, we use that to plant seventeen trees with the DPW's help that end up on the median between streets and sidewalks for, for residents. So there's a demand for it, and it's great to see, we're gonna continue the process, that's something I'll talk about a little bit more here in the next slide, partnering with the New Jersey Electric Vehicle Association, and we did our first seminar with the Native Plants Society here in this room of Somerset County, talking about the benefits of native plants and what it means to tackle invasives and what is considered invasive, so there's a couple flavors to that, and it's pretty interesting to see a good partnership grow. We did, on the top right here is a photograph of our commissioner, Jerry DiSappio, and the historical interpreter, I believe is what his title is, Paul Soltis, at the Wallace House in Old Dutch Parsonage, and every, we, every, through, every year they do a celebration for the tree that we planted, it's a Salem oak, so kind, we call it our baby in a way, but it's, among other things, it's a nice throwback to what the community here has done for many, many years and, and the conversion to the environmental side. We do a rain garden pruning that we have in front of Carroll Page Park that absorbs a lot of rainwater, thank you to the Rutgers Cooperative Extension for putting that together, and we continue to try to maintain that as best as we can. Our E V car show was a couple things, one of them, most importantly, was a community poll, which is kind of what's listed mostly on the slide here. This occurred in the first weekend of October, a street fair that the, the town puts on with the help of a private organization shuts down the majority of Main Street, and through gracious hosts, we're able to partner and put together a car show that has given us a chance to put a tent and talk about what we want to prioritize in town. So up on, on the, on the right side of the slide is our priorities and our focus, where we, we asked some questions of what environmental areas do you think need attention here in Somerville, and, and what environmental activities or skills would you like to learn about? So we got to learn a handful of things about what over two hundred and fifty people gave to us here, whether they be residents nearby or in adjacent towns, it's, it's nice to see what people have. We found that a lot of people considering the environment to be the parks, so it goes, coincides with restoration of the brook to make it more accessible for everybody and a great place to spend time, biking and walking trails, dog park is a big thing someone mentioned, including a cat park, I didn't know that was a thing, but someone was wanting to put that one on there. More trees, especially on Main Street, was nice to see, that's something that we are, we like as well, and infrastructure in town with E V chargers, as well as more trash cans and better recycling information and educational opportunities were things that we learned. So it's something that we're gonna continue, and we, you know, hope to learn what, you know, what we know is what we think is important, but what, we're here to serve the, the town, so nice to see what the town has to say as well. Onto the community garden, this is our second year as a full swing of the season, there were two volunteer days to set things up where we had about thirty individuals prepare the garden beds along with the DPW's help, we had planting soil brought over and stockpiled adjacent to the garden where everybody was digging shovels and moving wheelbarrows to put those things together. This year we had forty-five applicants for our plot, and part of a lottery system, fifteen plots were available, we're hoping to expand that, it was already twelve last year, up to fifteen, so it's nice to see that, and the growing season was a good one. A lot of the photos kind of show where people, where people like to spend time with it here, but it ends up being a bit of a community on its own right. There was a workshop that we hosted in June to discuss the basics of soil health, composting, and garden pests, as well as having the Girl Scouts come by to learn about what bold planting is and how to, what crops are good over the wintertime. Next year, we're looking to expand and have some fundraising opportunities that could hopefully add a little bit more space to what we do have, it seems to be a demand for it, and we're happy to fulfill that, something that is a nice gem to have in the borough here. The main, Main Street trees are something that we're venturing into, and we're using this to champion what I call champion current and future needs. The trees in town are in good shape overall, as we learned through a walkthrough with most of you here, actually a handful of you came about for that, to walk with a licensed tree expert that we've, maybe I have to actually ask Kevin that question, or we, hopefully we have him on board for doing a full inventory and a condition assessment, but trying to get a regular, regular maintenance on these trees and understand, taking out what we believe those fences to be a bit intrusive and making the most of what the space is available there. It, it's part of a canopy that includes a lot of greenery for many different ways, as we've discussed here, so we're looking forward to continue with that, and again, these were, this is something that we presented to you guys on October seventh here, so a lot of benefits to tree trees, and we've learned a lot, including, I have a picture here of a reference guide where they talk about cultivating these trees that are specifically designed to work in an urban environment, so you can't just pick a tree and hope it works, it needs to, needs to have a plan for it.
And you put a list together, correct?
We do have, yeah, thank you for that reminder, we do have a list together, it's, need to send that over, thank you for that reminder, and introduce that for, once for consideration here, for everybody to, to look at. Onto what we, what we did end up doing with the money that we earned from grants and funding, a lot of organizations, the majority of which came from the D E P for a grant for a hundred and fifty trees planted along Peters Brook, this was to limit the erosion that occurs on the brook as a result of flooding events, so it's nice to have these put in. The environmental club from Somerville High School and other volunteers helped put those together, and the DPW is assisting in making sure that they actually grow and maintain as they are, so that's helpful for a lot of respects. A lot of money came from the Arbor Day Foundation and MetLife, where we planted thirty-five trees, which has been nice to see some more of those, those grants are always great to have, and ANJAC, which is the Association of New Jersey Environmental Commissions, gave us a fifteen hundred dollar grant for community garden supports and continued seedlings and giveaways and cleanup supplies from our budget with the New Jersey Clean Communities at the DPW and, and we help work with, so it's nice to have these things. I always like to see my face on the slide, but posted next to me in the middle is our incoming chair, Timery Deal, she and I are closely working to, with ANJAC and getting, getting awards for what we do here in town, so we, we were given one of the few environmental achievement awards this year, and we are outside of the cycle, thankfully, practices advice and guidance that they offer, is we're silver certified, which is one below the best, it's nice to have that here in town, so twenty twenty-five, this year we'll start gearing up for our application next year, again, as we go through it. And we updated our urban and forest, urban and community forestry plan, that's a five-year plan that we submitted and was approved here by you guys here on council at the end of last year, and pending approval from the state, I think we're gonna have that in there, which is nice to see what, what we can do here in town. What we, what we have done, and I, so many words on this slide, but I didn't know how, how best to shrink it, so on the, on the left side are our goals from this past year, twenty twenty-four, two of which we are, we're gonna try to continue on to next year, and, and into, and in this twenty twenty-five here, continue to make our Earth Day as a highlight event, increase the tree canopy, and assist in the Borough Council and, and Planning Board in what the required ordinances that they have put forth for what those mean for the town and what we can do with those, more community engagement, strengthen the Main Street trees and the experience that, that those bring downtown, maintain and improve our community garden, and continue our engagement with the borough entities, DPW, downtown Somerville Alliance, the Planning Board, we're all, we all work together, so we certainly appreciate being heard and, and listening back and forth and having good conversation. So it's nice to have this as is, conclusion, we, we strengthen our community by collaborating and identifying local challenges, these are things sometimes the borough just cannot afford to do, whether it be time, workforce, or money, to put these together, so it's nice to have this opportunity, and we do it because we like it, it's, it's good for a lot of reasons, we, we feel there's a responsibility that we have as individuals for the stewardship of our community, and, and we like what we're up to, so. With that being said, I wanted to recognize.
I mean, they cut, they moved their meetings up a half hour so that they would get done earlier, and we're just staying an hour later, so typically their meetings will go from seven P M. to ten P M. It's incredible the amount of enthusiasm and interest that they have, and I'm grateful for all their good work, and thank you, Jeff, for your past leadership.
Yeah, thank you.
So I've never heard of a cat park.
Yeah, that's a new one.
That's a new one on me. Now, you know what, Jeff, you always come, you, you, you're informed, you're concise, and you give us a lot of great information that's easily digestible, so I thank you for that. You know, the work you do, it's, it's, you know, you're, you're, you're growing knowledge, you're, you're, you're growing trees, you're, you're growing a community, and that's, that's really, it's, I think you've set a standard for chairs, because I've seen a lot of chairs over the years, and, and I think you've, you know, we don't always agree.
That's okay.
But, but we actually managed to come to, to an understanding of where, the goal is always the same, it's just how, how we get there, but you've, you know, you've led the, the committee, and, and I thank you for that, I think you're doing some great work, and that shows, you know, you just take a walk through our parks and, and the amount of trees that have been planted over the last year or so, just, it's, you know, it's numbers, lots of numbers, and, and that's a great thing, so thank you, I appreciate that. Anybody else have any? Okay, I appreciate you coming out, and please thank the entire committee on, on behalf of the council, and we will be in touch very soon.
Yeah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
And make, and make sure you get that tree list over to us, because we'll also bring that to the Planning Board, and we'd actually like to have you come and, and speak with the Planning Board about the trees, because I think those are the folks that, that really, they're the ones who are gonna interact day to day with projects that come up, and they can guide folks to those trees.
Yeah, that's good, give them the information they need to answer questions that they're gonna get.
Exactly.
So, maybe, maybe I'll eventually stop getting nervous in front of the camera here, and.
You did great.
Five or six presentations here, we'll move along, so.
You're perfect.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you.
Thanks, Jeff.
All right, next up, we have two resolutions, resolution twenty-five oh one two one dash zero three nine is a resolution of the Borough of Somerville County of Somerset adopting its present need and prospective need for the fourth round of affordable housing obligations. So this obviously has been a hot topic for probably the last year in New Jersey, and every municipality in the state, five hundred and sixty-four of us are running the numbers. D C A, Department of Community Affairs, came out with these numbers, each town's obligations, both for their present need and their prospective need, back in, back in November. And there's very tight time constraints on what municipalities have to accomplish, I'll, I'll say over the next six months as kind of the driving force. The, the, the council has been working on this, the subcommittee has been working on this, and when the state came out with their numbers, the numbers that, that they've given us are, for our present need is a hundred and three units, and for our prospective need it's seventy-four units. We tasked our professionals with going through those numbers and identifying, based upon our, what we felt was our need, what we felt was our available open space, and having gone through all of those iterations over the past two months, we have determined that the, the state's numbers, according to the formula that they've created, are correct. But what happens now is, so we have to either adopt those numbers as, as our own, and what that will then do is it will shield us from a redevelop, or developers', thank you, remedy. Thank you, I got, I got from both, both sections, developer's remedy lawsuit, and, and that is very important to the borough, that's something that, 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 that we, we need to put in place. What will happen ultimately, though, is from these numbers, if the council so decides to adopt these tonight, we will then create a housing plan, which will then meet the needs that are set forth in those two numbers. That housing plan will then take into account both the, the housing stock that we have that fits the formula that, that the state has created, and it also understands, moving forward with potential development rehabilitation, how we then implement our fair share housing obligation under that. About ten years ago, we did do a housing analysis, and that housing analysis showed that the borough was compliant, but through market forces, and, and that held for a while, until, I'll say COVID hit, and the housing market turned itself upside down, the rental market turned itself upside down, and the, the rental rates went from here to here, not just in Somerville, and not just in New Jersey, nationwide, and you combine that with an influx of people, ten million people over the last four years, and you have this culmination of demand for housing, which has far outstripped the supply of housing. And, and Somerville, over the course of many, many years, has always taken that responsibility, we've shouldered that responsibility, I think, very well, from our senior housing center, the various group homes, and, and what we're now faced with is looking at that again, so we have to develop that housing plan that says, here is how we are going to comply with the mandates of the numbers that the D C A has set forth, the state of New Jersey has set forth, we will then take into account the existing housing stock that we have that fits those parameters, and those numbers will then adjust up and down. I think that's an over, a quick overview of a very complex process. Chris Zangara, our, our, our counsel for affordable housing is here, and I'm just gonna ask him to, to talk just very briefly about, you know, what the borough has to do over the course of the next six months, because there are now benchmarks that we have to hit as mandated by the state, you may have to turn that on, Chris, I don't know if that's on.
Might be the hardest part for tonight.
Give it a tap.
It's on.
It's on.
Good?
Yep, you're good. So if you would, just give us an overview of, and if I missed anything core in, in, in my overview of what we said, just feel free to fill in.
Mayor, council, good to be here, we serve as both redevelopment council to the borough as well as affordable housing council, and municipalities throughout New Jersey are doing exactly what you're doing tonight, which is having had your professionals review the non- the non-binding recommendation of the DCA, establish what your obligation is. So back in March two thousand and twenty-four, Governor Murphy signed a new bill, which amended the Fair Share Housing Act and established a new process, or an amended process, for establishing an obligation representing what your borough, what a municipality's fair share of the regional need for affordable housing should be for the next ten-year period. The bill set up two steps. One was to establish your number, and then second was to establish a plan that implements the compliance mechanisms that are going to achieve that number with any adjustments that need to be made. So the bill sets out several timelines, and the mayor was certainly correct that if you hit the January thirty-first deadline for establishing your number through a resolution, which will be submitted to the DCA, you will have-
Within forty-eight hours.
Within forty-eight hours, weekends included. It's been a fun month for us, affordable housing attorneys. You are given a period of immunity. If you make it till June two thousand and twenty-five and get your housing element and fair share plan done and submitted, you will then have a additional period of immunity. And the goal of submitting your housing element and fair share plan is to ultimately obtain a certification, a compliance certification, judgment of compliance or opposed, which gives you immunity for ten years to achieve your plan. So that's the roadmap of where we're trying to get to. This is a planner-driven process when it comes to building your housing elements. So that's going to be something that you're, that you're going to work with your planners on, your community. The one item I will note, so there is no concern, every municipality, after adopting their resolution, needs to file a court action to get the number into what's called the program. It's a program in the court that's going to be reviewing your number and reviewing your plan. So we will be initiating that lawsuit. It's the only mechanism that existed on the IT side for the courts to get this process started. So just on timelines, January thirty-first is the deadline to submit. Then we have February, let's see, February twenty-eighth is going to be the deadline for anyone to file objections to a municipality's adopted resolution. As the borough has reviewed the data and is agreeing with the DCA's number and establishing a number that mirrors the DCA, it's, there's a, I mean, a very good chance that there will not be challenges that come out of the woodwork. Can't make promises on that, but a lot of municipalities are proceeding with that assumption that they're safe from challenges if they're accepting a DCA number. There, if there are any challenges that are brought, and one additional point, your number is given a presumption of validity. So there is a very high burden for anyone challenging to have to meet, and they have to come in with specific calculations, and they can't just file a shallow challenge. After February twenty-eighth, there'll be a one-month period for any challenges to be reviewed by the program. And then we're off and running with a June, get this right, June thirtieth deadline to get your housing element and fair share plan done. That needs to be submitted to a planning board for review, ultimately to then come back to you for endorsement. So it's going to be a very tight timeline, but so far, you've been really on top of it, because we've seen municipalities scrambling the last two weeks. So that's your timelines, and we'll be working with the borough and the council to get you guys there.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Thank you. Very concise. And just so council's aware, about ten years ago, we did have Fair Share Housing come and do a presentation at one of our churches for the community. And at that time, Fair Share Housing said Somerville's doing pretty, pretty good. So it's really, it's a matter now of adjusting to the market demand, the increase in pricing of housing, both rental and ownership. And so, you know, the work's not done yet. This is just step, step, well, it's not step one, but maybe it's step five out of step ten. And we're, we'll charge ahead then with creating the housing plan. And we'll keep council informed of those steps as we move along. So at this point, I'll ask for a motion on zero three nine.
So moved.
Second. Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay. We have another resolution for a roll call vote, because that's the way the state, and I think, again, DCA mandates it this way. It is DCA?
Yeah.
Affirming the twenty twenty-five Downtown Somerville Alliance annual budget, which is about one point two million, one point one nine nine, I think it isn't some change. So we'll just round it up to one point two. Before I do that, Olivia Manning here, the Director of the DSA, is here, and I think she wants to introduce somebody as well. So if you want to come up and just make a quick introduction.
Hi, everyone. Just a quick introduction. We do have a new associate director, so I wanted to make sure everyone knew who she was. This is Leah Horowitz. She actually comes from a government background. She's worked with Parks and Recreation for many years now. I don't know how many there are. Four years. Would you like to, you can do this. Leah Horowitz.
Well, you just threw the fire, threw her right into the fire, didn't you?
Yeah. It's okay. I'm not shy behind a microphone or a camera. So I'm really excited to be here. I come from, like she said, municipalities. I've been in Burnsville, Mount Olive, Basking Ridge. So I'm very well informed of all of this stuff, which is so fun. I'm really excited to be here. I've always wanted to be a part of a downtown association. So I've been coming to Somerville my whole life. I grew up in Basking Ridge. This just felt so natural. So I'm really excited to be here and make some great things happen. Thank you, everyone.
Great. Thank you. Thanks.
Real quick.
I just also want to say thank you for all the support for the, for the DSA. I actually was handed this folder tonight. It's press from nineteen eighty-seven to nineteen eighty-six, when the original organization was put together. So it's very interesting to see the iterations of this organization over the years, and that we're about to make some more changes. So I appreciate the support. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. Motion on zero four zero.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion.
Yes, I have a question. Is there any money in this budget for the minor repairs needed for the sidewalks downtown?
So there is money in the budget for, for maintenance, councilwoman. The, we have a grant that we're working on right now. It's called the Transportation Set Aside, which will initiate the, hopefully, we're successful to participate in the first Phase One of redoing some of the pavers and locations, based on the report that was adopted by Arturo Design through the board. That provided a framework of where we're going to go. It is the, because it's a commercial district, the liability and the requirements to do sidewalk actually does fall within the commercial establishment. As many people have done, you've seen some of the developers fix their sidewalks and redo the sidewalks. We will be able to assist them and certainly guide them in the requirements to do that work, because downtown, you can't put in your own type of sidewalk. You have to comply with the plan that's in place. And that's the goal, is to not take on that cost in the DSA, nor necessarily take it on with the borough at all as well, to do it with a combination of both private and public opportunities. And that will be the goal as we move forward. We have to be very careful of the work that we do on the infrastructure downtown, because the DSA doesn't own it, and the borough doesn't, is not responsible for it. So there has been some interesting case law that has taken place over the last couple, couple of years, in which the municipality has really failed to remind the commercial owners that they're responsible for those sidewalks. So that is something we're working on, to make sure that they understand that they have to maintain them, they have to shovel them, they have to clean them. That's the responsibility of the commercial property owner, not necessarily the business, but the commercial property owner. And that's where our vision is right there. If there's opportunities to assist them on getting grant money, you know, we're, we have the capability to do that. But right now, we are looking at a grant that's, I'm actually doing the training next week in May of this year. I'm sorry, it's March of this year, that's due, which would be a small phase of that, kind of select the area that we most want to repair. I shouldn't say repair, renovate, because the goal is to renovate that. If we have areas in the downtown that are causing some issues, we could certainly address those property owners as we go. And that's been kind of the vision over the last couple of years as we do. I know that that probably strays away from what you're looking for the DSA to do, but, but that, you know, the DSA's goal is to promotion market and so forth. And to keep downtown clean. And obviously have events and help the property owners, I should say, the business owners promote their business and continue to grow, while the property owners maintain their ability to supply the tenants' trashcans, assist, provide the cleaning, and that's, that's the vision.
Can you clarify, do we have the grant?
We don't. You'll be, you'll, I'm doing the trainings, I think next week it is. It's required training before you can apply for the grant. The grant is fairly substantial, but no, we don't have the grant. We've applied for it before unsuccessfully, but not particularly in the framework of doing sidewalks. This particular year, it is available for streetscapes of main streets.
I cannot stress enough the need for repair. It is, there's outright safety issues, trip hazards, liabilities. So whoever's responsibility is, it needs immediate addressment. If it's not in the budget, so be it. But that had been a precedent before, that DSA was doing sidewalks.
So, so, and I'm going to, Jeff, just one thing, this is, and we discussed this, and this may actually parlay into sidewalk repair. We talked about how the trees, it's not that there're lack of water, it's lack of oxygen.
Correct.
So there has to be some standards out there, and we talked about this, of grading, with a T, not a, not a D, but grates.
Yeah.
Can you see if there are design elements out there? Because rather than repairing sidewalks, maybe it's installing grates that would then have a beneficial effect. So, so what I'm trying to do is to marry the two. So if you, you know, if that's something that the Environmental Commission can kind of take a look at and see if there are case studies out there, if there are other municipalities that have faced this, and come up with something very creative, unique, different, which actually solves both problems.
Arturo Design did come up with this honeycomb kind of grid system, which they shared with the Environmental Commission, probably early last year or late the prior year. That is a more trendy, very expensive way of encouraging both tree growth and air and water. But it's something that we hadn't, you know, the DSA had looked at that plan and endorsed that. I know the Environmental Commission looked at as well. It is starting to get a little more use, but it is an environmentally friendly plan that allows for both the pedestrians to provide greater space, however, having a system underneath the pavers to, to-
I don't even refer to trees. I refer to missing bricks that aren't even near the trees. I refer to bricks piled up that haven't been picked up. And I think one very simple remedy to the issues with, with the trees is, in those areas, is to put some benches around the trees, so people aren't even exposed to walking on that area. So I think there's some very simple things that can be done and need to be done immediately, especially before spring. And, or I don't know, with, with the road being torn up, how everything's going to be affected, but it needs immediate attention.
Well, certainly, and like I said, the, the property owners are being placed on notice as a result of those lawsuits that took place last year, where, where the improvement districts were being pulled into cases, in which the same thing with Somerville. Obviously, twenty years ago, the borough, and along with the DSA, had, at the time it was the DMC, had constructed all the sidewalks. And, but that didn't take the liability off the property owner to maintain that. And I think that maybe there was, you know, over a period of time, there's lost communication with that. But we'll certainly have, I'll work with Brian from our, our property maintenance, and he'll go up the street and we'll identify those areas and put those property owners on notice.
We can provide you with the report. It's already been done through, this is RideWise.
Okay. And that's perfect. And we could, we could certainly start from there. I think they'll, you know, you know, you'll get some, we'll get some compliance in that way, and then we could identify other funding sources to assist people on infrastructure improvements.
Thank you.
Thank you. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right. I will ask for a motion to open the meeting to the public.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right. Meeting is now open to the public. Please state your name and address for the record. Please address your comments to me. Hearing not, I'll ask for a motion to close.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
Okay. Consent resolutions. We have one walk-on resolution, which is Resolution zero five zero, which is authorizing the submission of the state of DCA, once again, grant for ballfields located at Carroll Page or Park. We will take that one separately at the back end. So are there any that anybody would like to have pulled off for further discussion? All right. Zero four one, memorializing and approving the execution of contract for E-ticket renewal agreement between Somerville Police Department and GTBM. Forty-two is rescinding resolution, as noted, awarding a contract to G2 Automated Technologies in the amount of fourteen thousand five hundred eighty dollars and forty-four cents for emergency services facility. Forty-three is authorizing the award of a non-fair and open contract for redevelopment council to renowned Cofflin Mincello, attorneys at law. Forty-four, authorizing change order number one for contract with AA Berms LLC for the construction of Veterans' Memorial Drive Plaza. Forty-five is authorizing temporary appropriation for the twenty twenty-five current operating municipal budget. Forty-six is authorizing free parking on February fourteenth, starting at four PM, at all metered spaces and lots. Forty-seven is, sorry, supporting an application for a supplemental HDSRF grant for additional remediation activities at the landfill BDA redevelopment area located on Route two oh six north in the Borough of Somerville. Forty-eight is awarding a contract to firefighter one for wall-mounted and freestanding lockers to be used at the emergency services facility. Forty-nine is authorizing properties, as noted, to place banners bearing advertising for businesses located at the same addresses beyond the fourteen-day requirement and shall conform with Chapter one oh two dash one one nine upon the removal of scaffolding. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right. Zero five zero is authorizing submission of the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Fiscal Year twenty-five Local Recreation Improvement Grant for ballfields located at Carroll Page or Park, known on the tax map as Block one oh eight, Lot fourteen. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right. Zero five zero is authorizing submission of the State of New Jersey Department of Community Affairs Fiscal Year twenty-five Local Recreation Improvement Grant for ballfields located at Carroll Page or Park, known on the tax map as Block one oh eight, Lot fourteen. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
All right. Roger, bills and vouchers.
I make a motion to pay bills and vouchers in the amount of two million five hundred and twenty-one thousand eight hundred thirty-four dollars and fifty-five cents.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Council members, Teresa Bonner.
Yes.
Andrew Conti.
Yes.
Glenn Dennehy.
Yes.
Randy Pitts.
Yes.
Gina Stravick.
Yes.
Roger Verne.
Yes.
So Tom is not here for me to ask him for a motion for adjournment, so I'm going to, I'm going to give it to the new guy.
Motion for adjournment?
Okay. Second. Discussion. Ball in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This meeting is adjourned.